I'll call to order the third meeting on the Maryland City Council, meeting in regular session on Monday, January 13th, 2014. Please note, if you wish to be heard at this meeting, please sign the speaker list provided on your table at the side of the chamber. The President has the right to limit the amount of time each speaker has for each agenda item. Each speaker will have two minutes to speak for each agenda item. We will now have the invocation led by Reverend Warren Litchfield, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mayor Moe.
Would you join me in a moment of prayer? Almighty God, we gather this evening hour to conduct the business of this city. We offer our prayer for our mayor, for the President, for the members of the City Council and for all in authority. Grant unto them a sense of justice, strength, and wisdom as they perform their duties on behalf of all thy people. As we commend this city, county, state, and nation to thy most book air, and being guided by thy divine providence, we may dwell secure in thy peace. We especially commend to your gracious care in keeping all the men and women of our armed forces at home and abroad, and law enforcement and fire and rescue community. Defend them day by day with your heavenly grace, strengthen them in their trials and temptations, give them courage to face the peril that set them, and grant unto each a sense of your abiding presence wherever they may be. Remember those upon a bed of affliction; come but those who mourn. Hear our prayer in thy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Rao, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Crary?
Here.
Mr. Ricks?
Here.
Mr. Lez?
Here.
Ms. Nicholas?
Here.
President Smalls?
Here.
Mayor Moe?
Agenda item five is approval of the amendments of the second meeting of Monday, December 9th, 2013. Council, if you've had a chance to review the amendments, if there are no corrections or modifications, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve.
Are there motions, or a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Rao, please call the roll.
Ms. Crary?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Mr. Lez?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
President Smalls?
I vote yes. Agenda item six is the report of the Maryland City Council, and tonight we'll start with Councilwoman Crary.
Thank you, Mr. President. On January 4th, I attended bagels with the council at the Laurel Armory. Last week, on Wednesday evening, I attended the opening day at the Maryland General Assembly. It's a chance for us to introduce ourselves and for them to introduce themselves to us and develop a relationship that Ms. Rao and Ms. Crook will continue on throughout the legislative session. And that would conclude my report. Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Crary? Councilman Ricks?
No report, sir.
Councilman Lez?
Thank you, Mr. President. On January 4th, I attended the Convention Planning Committee from Maryland Municipal League. They have finalized their agenda, including the sessions, the informative sessions that they'll be offering this year, and it is a packed agenda. January 8th, I attended the Patuxent River Commission meeting in Annapolis. I'll note that the Patuxent River Commission is hard at work on the amended policy plan for the Patuxent River, and I've asked the President to place it on the agenda for the February work session. I'll be making a short presentation. And the reason that this has to be considered and passed by resolution allowing the mayor to sign it is the city is the only city in the Patuxent River that is a signator with the other six counties. So it's pretty important. It doesn't happen very often. We're trying to make sure it doesn't take two or three years to get it done. Last time it took two years. This time, I think we're going to get it all done in one year. That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Lez. Councilwoman Nicholas?
I have nothing to reply.
Thank you. I'll be very brief. On opening day of the General Assembly, as many of you know, I am a member of the Maryland Municipal League's Legislative Committee. So the committee had one of its first meetings as we move into the legislative session. We had a number of proposed bills to consider. Each of them had some potential impact on municipalities across the state. Several of those bills we voted to support. There were a number of them that we took no action on. So as the session progresses, I'll be reporting here at our council meetings on the status of some of the bills that, again, will have impact on our municipalities. That's my report. Mayor Moe?
Thank you, Mr. President. Couple things. Give condolences to the family and friends of Fay Turner. Fay was a longtime election judge here for the city of Laurel, and we got word today that she had passed away on the 7th. So again, our condolences to the Turner family. Also, get well wishes to Mr. Bob Manzi, who's a little bit under the weather. As you heard, the Maryland Municipal League did have their legislative reception. I want to thank members of the council, staff, and others who attended the reception. Again, well received by the legislators in Annapolis. And I can tell you that the members of the 21st, our delegation, were there as well. So we appreciate them coming out as well. You all getting feedback? Good? January the 17th is Martin Luther King Jr. Day. We will be doing our re-ceremony here at the Laurel Municipal Center, which is on Friday, right here in front of the building, starting at 4:00. Public is welcome. The city employees have done this for several years, and we encourage members of the public to come out. On January the 19th, which is Sunday, the Sing for King will take place. We're co-sponsors, as well as clergy association, and that will be held at the Laurel High School Auditorium this year, from 7:00 p.m. until 9:00 p.m. We again encourage the general public to come out and participate. It's a great event, and I want to thank all of those that helped plan this every year. And on January the 20th is the Martin Luther King Jr. Day, and that city offices will be closed on January the 20th. Mr. President, I have one appointment that I'd like to make and ask for council confirmation. That is for the Board of Appeals, which will start on 1/13/14 and go until 1/13/17, of Mary Eileen Lez, who I think will do an outstanding job for the city. She understands the city. She understands what the Board of Appeals is all about, and I'd ask for your concurrence.
Thank you, Mayor. It was a pleasure to counsel.
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Crary?
I recommend that we approve the appointment. Mary Eileen Lez?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Ricks. Any discussion? Ms. Rao, please call for the vote.
Ms. Crary?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Mr. Lez?
Abstain.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
President Smalls?
I vote yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. concludes my report.
Thank you, Mayor. Agenda item eight is the recognition of the City of Laurel Fire Prevention Month poster contest winners.
Thank you, sir. Each year, the City of Laurel sponsors a fire prevention show that we go to all the schools within the city limits of Laurel, and we do about an hour-long show, and it's pretty much fire prevention. It's all fire prevention and some life safety and some police work. One of the things we do is we ask the children to participate in this, to do a fire prevention poster, and what we like to do is we like to do it right after we do the shows, and that way we find out if they are picking up the information we're teaching. This year, we had probably over 300 to 400 posters that come in, and the children here, majority of them, there was 18 of them that were picked for winners, and we're going to be recognizing them. And we only do the fire prevention show up to the third grade, so we kind of keep it to second, third grade. That's the good level that we can educate with them. What I like to say is for the parents, if you want to take a picture with the mayor, if you have a camera, when your child has come up, if you please come up, stand in front here, and you can take a picture with the mayor, and he'll make the presentation.[604.00][604.00](Laughter.) Okay, if you say so. Okay, so Mr. Fleming here will be the emcee. There you go, sir. And I made some really easy names for you. The check marks are the ones over here, so it really doesn't mention the elements. You want to stand over here, Ken?
Yes. Okay, second grade for Laurel Elementary School. First place, not here this evening, is Lele Cruz. Second place, not here again this evening, is Daniel Perez. And the third place is Monica Benitez. Is she here? (Applause.) First place is Esther Ballernara.
Did I get that right?
Second place is Takiya Hagler. I hope I got that right.[703.82][703.82](Applause.) Third place is, not here this evening, Alexis Hamilton. St. Mary of the Mill School, second grade. First place is Emily Dankwa. Second place is Louis Panabianco. And third place is Logan Kess.[758.41][758.41](Applause.) First place is Stanley Anita. Second place is Mercy Bowen. And third place is Kyra Escala, not here this evening. Okay, next we have third grade for Scotchtown Hills Elementary School. The first place, this individual has moved out of state. We have mailed her medal to her at her new school. Navia Williams was the first place. Second place is Desmond Yule. Third place is Madison Hunley.[863.41][863.41](Applause.) First place is Deborah Mensah. Second place is Mark Sullivan. Third place is not here, it's George Trimble.[933.82][933.82](Applause.)
Listen to what he says as soon as I'm done. Let me take this opportunity on behalf of the mayor and council to congratulate all the winners here today. All of you all are winners. It doesn't matter if you're first, second, or third. You participated, and you took part, and that's what's more important than anything. You know, I want to thank the council for their hard work. They help fund these programs that the fire marshal puts on, and we couldn't do that without their support. So thank you all for coming this evening. Hopefully, the kids have taught the parents a few things. Everybody's got their smoke detectors and CO detectors and all, right? Very good. You guys go out there and get your photo. We look forward to you taking part next year and practice fire safety and safety all the time. Congratulations to all of y'all. Fire marshal?
We're going to stand outside and get our pictures. You'll be able to take your awards when you leave. Thank you very much.
Agenda item five is approval of the amendments of the second meeting of Monday, December Council, if you've had a chance to review the amendments, if there are no corrections
I vote yes.
Agenda item 11 is the second public hearing with possible action on ordinance number 1786, an ordinance to amend the operating budget of the Maryland City Council of Laurel, Maryland for the fiscal year July 1, 2013 through June 30, 2014. I've read the title into the record for the second reading. I'll open the public hearing at 7:32. Ms. Saylor, do you have anything to add? No? I have no one signed up to speak on this agenda item. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing at 7:32. It was a pleasure to counsel.
Mr. President?
Councilman Lez?
I move for the adoption of ordinance number 1786, an ordinance to amend the operating budget of the mayor, City Council of Laurel, Maryland for the fiscal year July 1, 2013 through June 30, 2014.
Thank you, Councilman Lez. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Ricks. Any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Rao, please call the roll.
Mr. Lez?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Ms. Crary?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
President Smalls?
I vote yes.
Mayor Moe?
I concur with council.
Agenda item 11 is the second public hearing with possible action on ordinance number 1787, an ordinance to amend certain project budgets in the fiscal year 2014 through fiscal year 2019 capital improvement program. I read the title into record for the second reading. I'll open the public hearing at 7:33. I have no one signed up to speak for this agenda item. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing at 7:33. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Crary?
I recommend that we approve ordinance number 1787, an ordinance to amend certain CIP projects for 2014 through 2019.
Thank you, Councilwoman Crary. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Nicholas. Any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Rao, please call the roll.
Ms. Crary?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Mr. Lez?
Yes.
President Smalls?
I vote yes.
Mayor Moe?
Agenda item 12 is the second public hearing with possible action on ordinance number 1791, an ordinance to amend Chapter 2, Administration, Articles 9, Community Redevelopment Authority, to add Section 2-186.1, Membership, Providing an Effective Date.
I've read the title into the record for the second reading. I'll open the public hearing at 7:34. I have no one signed up to speak on this agenda item. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing at 7:34. It was a pleasure to counsel.
Mr. President, I move for adoption.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Rao, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Ricks?
Aye.
Ms. Crary?
Yes.
Mr. Lez?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
President Smalls?
Yes.
Mayor Moe?
I vote yes.
Is there any other business to come before the Maryland City Council? Seeing none, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.